In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, we thank you that we have the opportunity to gather in your name once again, although virtually it is still a blessing for us, oh Lord, that you make it possible for us to continue to talk about your word and continue to dive into your word and see how you guide us through the word. We ask you therefore to grant transformation and peace to Ukraine and Russia. Lord, touch the minds of the leaders who are involved that they may see the peaceful way that is available to them by which they can resolve their difficulties. Enter into that situation, oh Lord, and grant peace to all who will also like to have the chance to think about you and to think about your word for their lives. And now as we continue with our study, continue to touch us and help us to know how we can apply what we learn in the way that to glorify you only in our world. And we ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Okay, so we come to a book that is part of wisdom literature, and it is part of wisdom literature because because of many things that we are going to talk about. Especially today, we are basically going to talk about why a book like this is in the Bible and why it is adopted by both Christians and Judaism. Judaism, it comes from Judaism, but Christians also adopt it and Christians use it a lot. And I know that for many, many people are not familiar with this book. Many people don't even know that a book like this exists in the Bible. That's why I say all the time that everything that we do in human life, our faith has something to say about it. There is no part of our lives that your faith cannot touch. The faith is whole. And when we say Catholic, we say wholeness. Catholic means wholeness. The word comes from Greek. And that Greek word is kataholu, which means of the whole, wholeness. There is no part that is out of it. If there is any part that is left out, it is no longer whole. And that is not just wholeness of different people, but it's also wholeness of the human being, one person, that every person is a whole, every person is holistic. Every person has everything they need and every part of yourself is important to the faith. God is interested in the faith. God is not only interested in your feet or in your head. God is interested in who you are of the whole and who your psyche is, who you are psychologically, financially, economically, emotionally, whatever you have, God is interested in that and God can touch that and the faith can touch that. And God is touching that already. So it's important for us to know how God relates with ourselves as a whole and then how God relates with us as different people coming together as a whole. How God relates with us as a community as a whole. But it starts from the individual. The individual should be whole first before you can bring wholeness to a community. So if some part of you is aching, some part of you is not right, some part of you is not being touched by your faith, then there is a problem. You are not whole. And if we are not whole, we are sick. Spiritually, we will be sick if we are not whole. If one part of us is hidden, is not being touched, is not being addressed by the faith, if we take certain parts out, we do not fit in. We feel like fish out of water. So this reading also is there, the Book of Songs of Songs. First of all, let me see by hand, how many of you knew about this book in the Bible? I've seen it in the Bible? Yeah, okay, alright. And those of you who have been in wedding a lot and paid attention to wedding, some parts of this book has made its way, has become one of the popular readings in wedding ceremonies. And it's more about human love. The whole thing is about human love and what to make of human love and human sexuality, human sexual, the sharing of sexuality, human sexuality. And they want to actually, because this is what human beings do. And if human beings do that, we cannot put it on the ground and say, "Oh yeah, the Bible cannot talk about that." The Bible can talk about other things. No, 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 no. It's part of the human life and so it's part of the wholeness that Jesus redeems. And so the faith, God will have something to say about it. And so how we are going to learn this book is... And remember, it is put among the wisdom books. So it's a guidance. Whatever this book is saying, it's not like absolutes. This book is not talking about absolutes. In wisdom, we don't talk about absolutes. There's no absolutism. It's always suggestions and you also take it into your life and see how you can apply it. So there are no one size fits all for anything that we talk about in the wisdom literature. So it is called Song of Songs and the topics we are going to deal with today are going to be more centered about why this book is important, why this book is in the Bible in the first place. So to talk about that, we first will talk about the book's importance and then we'll talk about the date that the date that the book was composed or collected together or finalized into its final form, the date that has been given to the book. And then also when we are talking about a date, we are talking about then who wrote it. Was it Solomon who wrote it? Because again, there's Solomon's name in there at the beginning. I ask you to read chapter 1. Once you start reading, it tells you that Solomon wrote it. It was by Solomon. But then, okay, Solomon wrote it, but then Solomon wrote it, but you hear a woman talking and then you hear a man talking and then you hear Israel talking. So who wrote it? That's a question that we will see. Then we will talk about what kind of book is the Song of Songs. What kind of book is it? Is it a newspaper? It is for newspaper? Is it for a theater? Is it for... What are we supposed to be expecting from it? That's what kind of book it is. And then we'll talk about Song of Songs' status in the canon. You know what the canon is. I will come back again and refresh your mind about what the canon is. The canon, but basically it's a list of books, a list of books that a particular church or community has approved as inspired by God and legitimate thing to be used to teach. The books is a list, the list of books. But Song of Songs made its way into the list of the canons and we want to see its status. Which status does it hold in the canon? And then we'll talk about the message of the Song of Songs. That is what I want to reserve. The message of the Song of Songs is a theological teaching of the Song of Songs and that's what we will consider next week. But we will do the first four today and that should give us an idea of why Song of Songs is in the Bible. Okay, and I'm happy that many of you know about Song of Songs already. You know about the book. But many other people are not aware. Especially when you read it, the things you hear, you don't feel people, a lot of people don't feel comfortable. It's not a book for children, for sure. It's not a book for children to read. But this is about, this is a mature, this is about mature faith people, adult. That's why, this is what I mean by adult Bible study is that we actually consider all the books. We don't hide any of them. So let's look at its importance. The importance of the Song of Songs. The Song of Songs comes first in the collection of liturgical prayers for the five great feasts of Israel. This is how important it is. It's so important that in the collection of the liturgical prayers in the five great feasts of the Jewish community, this song comes first as a prayer. It's a song, but during the feast, this is the first one that is actually proclaimed. You can see the feast, the kind of books that are used in the feast. The books quote this book. They quote Song of Songs. They put Song of Songs in there when they are celebrating. The Israelites are celebrating their five great feasts. The five great feasts are the ones that I have over there. So the first greatest feast of the Israelites is Pesah or Pesah, which is the same as what we call the Passover. Because the Passover is the beginning of Israel. It's the creation of Israel as a nation. Without the Passover, it's like, I told you, it's the independence celebration. So in America, we can say 1776 is our Independence Day. So July 1st, 17, July 1st, every July 1st is the Independence Day. The Passover is the independence of Judaism. Because it's the day, it's the time that God saved them from Egypt and allowed them to escape from their oppressors. They escaped from Egypt and went through the desert and all the way to the Promised Land and then forged their nation. So they consider the Passover as their, and the Passover, whenever they celebrate the Passover, the eight days after, what you call the octave, the eight days after, they celebrate what you call the Feast of the Unleavened Bread. So the Passover and the Feast of Unleavened Bread, there are prayers that are said. And in those prayers, the first song that is sung is the Song of Songs. It's the Song of Songs. It's the same thing when you look at the other festivals. Another festival for the Israelites is Pentecost. You know Pentecost is not, it's not a Christian, it's a Judeo-Christian service. Pentecost is a Jewish feast. It's a festival of Judaism. But the Christians adopted it because Pentecost, Penteh is, that name itself is Greek. Penteh is five and Kosteh has to do with the day. Fifty days or fifty times something is done, fifty days. And for us, fifty days after Easter, after Jesus' resurrection, fifty days, we celebrate Pentecost. So, but in the Jewish community, the Feast of Pentecost is what you call Shavuot. Shavuot, I didn't write the Hebrew name there, but Pentecost is the feast, is the feast the Jewish people call Shavuot. And Shavuot is the day that they do the first fruits. They offer the first fruits. Like when they harvest, the first harvest, they offer the first fruit. God asked them to sacrifice the first of everything to God. So it's the feast, they attach a feast to it. And so the feast is called Shavuot. But again, in that feast, they read from the Book of Ruth, the Book of Ruth. And in that book, Ruth quotes Song of Songs. It quotes that song. That song is the first to be read. So as I say, in Ruth, for the Feast of Pentecost, you hear Song of Songs. That's how important Song of Songs is. And then the next celebration is Young Kippur for the Israelites. And we know that also that that's also a very important feast, but it's a feast of an atonement. It's a feast of atonement, the anniversary of the exile, when they were sent into exile and brought back. So they celebrate that in order to thank God for the forgiving power, for the forgiveness. And that's what atonement. This is the time that they and God become one. This is the day that the high priest can go into the temple and go to the tabernacle to go straight into the holy of holies and offer incense over there. And that's the anniversary of the exile in 586 B.C. So they always celebrate that. And in that festival, they use the book Lamentations, the Book of Lamentations. And in it, the very first song is Song of Songs. This poem or song that we see, that we read, because if you read through it, there's no story here. It's not, there's no story in this book. It's all about poems. It's a collection of poems and songs and love songs. But that's the song that they sing. You will come to find out why they're singing Song of Songs. That's what we will consider when we look at the theology. Why were they singing this song? Israelites always sing this song for all their five great feasts. That was the first song. That was the first thing that they sang. Why do they invoke that? We will come to find that later. And then Cohileth or Ecclesiastes also quotes this book or refers to this book when it is used in the feast, what you call the Feast of the Tabernacles or Sukkot. That's the Jewish name for that feast, this feast of tabernacles is called Sukkot. And it's the in-gathering. When they harvest the food and they are bringing it in, not when they are offering it, when they are offering it is Pentecost, but when they are bringing the grain from the field to the barns, it's a feast. There's a feast. So they sing a song and they thank God that they're bringing the food home. They're gathering, in gathering of the food, including animals too. So this is what is called the Feast of Sukkot. Sukkot is the name, but I may not be pronouncing it well. But they read the Book of Ecclesiastes. You remember that book we just, we saw before? That says, "There's a time for everything. There's a time for this. There's a time for that. There's a time for that." In it, it quotes Song of Songs at some point. It refers to it and that's what they're saying. And that feast occurs in October mostly. October, today, that feast occurs in October in Israel. Then finally, the Book of Esther also refers to this song, Song of Songs, when they celebrate the Feast of Purim. And that's basically the feast. It's not that big, but it's something. It celebrates lots when they were giving lands. When the tribes, when the tribes left Egypt and got to the Promised Land, they had to share the land. They were giving lot and plots and things like that. So they're sharing, they celebrate this feast to also celebrate the acquisition of lots. So, but again, in there, they sing this song or they refer to this poem. So it is very important. That's how important the Song of Songs is. The Israelites considered it very important that they had to put it in their festivals. It's very much in their festival. The Christians also, we also think that is very important. So we also adopted it. We use it in different ways. Okay, so then, so let's consider when it was collected, when these songs were collected. Many, many scholars think that Solomon actually wrote this. Solomon was the author. And they give reasons for why Solomon is the author. But critical studies have shown that it may not be Solomon who wrote it, that it was collected at a particular time. It has its own time of collection. So, but let us see why people look at it as a book that was written by Solomon as the author. That is the thousand B.C. If you're thinking about thousand B.C., then you are thinking Solomon wrote it. But if you are thinking that it was written at the end of the Babylonian exile, the Babylonian exile was 586. And they came back at the end of it, they came back around 400 B.C. So if you're around 400 B.C., it should not be Solomon. If it is the end of the exile, then it wasn't Solomon. Because Solomon lived earlier than that, in around 1000 B.C. So let us look at why some, because the reasons why people think that Solomon was the author. The first one is that they thought Solomon was the author because they wanted the book to be authoritative, that it should be, it should have some power. In biblical authorship, that's what happens. If you want the book to be authoritative and to be accepted, you need to put somebody, you need to have its author to be someone who is significant in the Bible, who is a hero in the Bible. And so they use that idea to say that Solomon, the fact that this book has been accepted in the Israelite tradition, it wouldn't be accepted if it weren't somebody like Solomon who actually did it. So because of that, they believe that Solomon wrote it or collected it together. The other reason is that Solomon was famous for his large harem. And that harem is that, harem is this behavior of having a place for women associated with you. I mean, somebody who is fascinated with women. Solomon was known as that. And if you read through the book, it's more, it's really crazy about women. The man is described also at some point, but then most of it is about the beauty of the woman and the beauty of the lover. But the lover that they're talking about, they're talking about man and woman here. That's the only thing they're talking about here. So Solomon's weakness and, Solomon has a very special place for women in his life. And he had hundreds, hundreds of concubines, hundreds of wives and then hundreds of concubines. And so I'm like, okay, well, that's thousand B.C., okay? We live in 2022. So, but those are biblical terms. So people hold on to that, some thinkers hold on to that and say, "It surely might be Solomon who wrote that." Because you can see Solomon in there. You can see Solomon's behavior reflected in there. So he might be the one. The third reason is that Solomon was the traditional patron of Israel's wisdom literature. We already know, we already have seen that. So this last one actually will be, will be, can be accepted by everybody because first of all, it's not claiming that Solomon actually wrote it, but that Solomon is that, traditionally, Solomon is the one considered to be the author of any book of wisdom or any wisdom tradition in Israel. So if we are struggling to find the author, well, it's easy to give it to Solomon. So that's, that's what we know about that book. There is one thing though, but some scholars, some scholars read the book itself, what they are reading inside the book itself, have made them, recent scholars, especially recent scholars, believe that it was written by a woman, that a woman wrote this book. And although they can't point exactly who this woman is, and I can tell you, if you go to black Catholic theology, black theology, a lot of people think that it's a black woman who wrote it, a woman from Egypt or a woman from Kush or one of those ancient black worlds that are part of the Bible, that are all in the Bible, from Genesis to Revelation, there are black lands that have been described. Kush, the land of Kush, the land of Ethiopia and all these places, they're all in the Bible. The black people were mixed up with all those areas. So some people believe it. And I've told you already about the Queen of Sheba, the Queen of Sheba who visited Solomon and tradition, other histories talk about the fact that she got pregnant and went home. And so there are Ethiopian Jewish people today who make their way, their ancestry, trace their ancestry to Solomon and they are perfectly recognized. So if you go to Jerusalem today, if you see those people who are wailing by the wall and praying over there, there are a lot of black people among them. There are a lot of Ethiopian Jewish people. So somebody believes, one of some of the scholars believe that some parts of it are not everything. Some believe that a woman wrote the entire book, but others believe that a woman composed some of the poems, not all of them, but some of the poems. Especially those of you who read, who did your homework in chapter 1, verse 5, it says, "I am black and beautiful, daughters of Jerusalem, like the tints of cadar, like the curtains of Solomon. Do not stare at me because I am so black, because the sun has burned me. The sons of my mother were angry with me. They charged me with the care of the vineyards. My own vineyard I did not take care of." Well, what does it mean, "I am black, I am so dark, I am so black and beautiful"? That's interesting description. And so some believe that a woman composed that and not just that, but a woman whose complexion was dark, was black. Okay, so those are the things we can say about authorship of this book. We do not know exactly who wrote it. All we know is that it is attributed, attributed to Solomon as someone who is the godfather of wisdom literature in the Bible. So now let us consider the form, what kind of book this is. When we are reading it, what should we, how should we treat it? What kind, when we are reading it, what should we, how should we treat it? Should we treat it like a song? Should we treat it like a, like a history? Should we treat it like a dogmatic teaching? What should we treat it? For sure, it is a wisdom literature. So if it's a wisdom literature, it's not dogmatic, okay? It's not, it's not like certain rules and regulations and take it or leave it. No, 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 no. It's rather, it's rather, like we said, the Book of Song of Songs is like the Psalms, the Psalms. Like the Psalms is a song. And it was judged the loveliest song or the most perfect song. And that is why it is called Song of Songs. Otherwise, it would be called the Book of Songs, okay? Or the Book, the Book of Song, a Song, the Book of a Song. But they say it's a book of Song of Songs. It is, it is the greatest among the songs, all the songs that you can have. And that justifies why they sing it first in five, in the five great feasts of Israel. That's superlative name, Song of Songs, okay? So, so it's a song. And if it's a song, how do we treat songs in our world, right? How do we treat songs in our world? As a song, we know that we treat songs as poems, or songs are basically poems. And so as a song and like a poem, it's like, it's like a poem, it's like a proverb or it's like a sayings. So Song of Song is one way that Israel preserved its culture, its wisdom, its mentality, its legacy and its tradition. Songs and poems are ways by which we preserve culture and hand it over to the next generation. It is, these are literally literary tools that we use. Poems are used also. So when they are written down in it, so when you read it, you can reflect on it and you can come to knowledge of what our people actually believe or what they, what they know. What is knowledge? What is wisdom? How to live a good life? How to live a particular life? Like this particular one actually tells us how to live the love between humans, how to consider the love between two, two human beings, how to treat it, how to respect it, why should we respect that? And not to, not to, not to just treat human love like casual things. This book helps us to know how important human love is. And, and, and the Jewish people treated human love and even deeply human intimate love, sexual love, not as a dirty thing as many people might think, but as something that we should, we should really give thanks to God for and something that is holy, something that should be treated with respect. So, so that's how we come to know that it's a, it preserves a Jewish, Israeli culture. It preserves the Israelite faith. And since the Christians have taken it too, it does preserve our faith, what we believe about human sexuality and you, no, not human sex, human sexual love. Yeah, yeah. Human sexual relationship, how we understand it, okay? So we know that poems do that all the time in many different traditions. Like in the, for example, in the English tradition, you hear, "Time is money." Somebody says that, that's a problem, okay? But it preserves, it tells you about the mentality of, of a particular people. Time is money. In Italy, Italians always have something, they say, "Chi va piano, vasano." "Chi va piano, vasano." One who goes slowly, slowly is healthy also, something like that. If you take time to do things, you get it right, okay? But that tells, tells you about the persons, the culture that they are talking about. The culture, that culture is, is more, they take their time to, 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 to do things. And then you have, the French have, "Chacun pour soi, Dieu pour nous tous." "Chacun pour toi," each for himself and God for us all, God for us all. Each for himself, God for us all. You know where that, that, that would tell you, the French are always like a little bit, a little bit individual, individualism creeps in a little bit with French, French life, you know? In Dahomey, in Benin, that is two countries from my country going east, they have a, a proverb that says, the millet says that it does not get any thanks for all the benefits it gives people. But that, they, they brought out that proverb because that area, the Gulf of Benin, that was a place where a lot of slaves were taken from there. So, so many people have that in their consciousness that they work hard, but then they, they don't get any recognition, you know? But they use the millet, the millet is like grain to say that. So, so you can see what, how those people think. They feel like they have been, they have not been rewarded properly. So, so that's like Song of Songs. Song of Songs is about that. We have to treat it that way. When we read it, we try to find out what, what wisdom the people of Israel have, what wisdom the Christians have about human sexual relationship. There's wisdom in it. Then, so we want to say Song of Songs is like a proverb that teaches moral values like love your enemies, okay? Love your enemies, you can find proverbs, proverb says that, love your enemies. But then you go to the scriptures, you go to the, you go to the New Testament and you see the same thing. Jesus says, "Love your enemies and pray for those who persecute you." So the Christians hold that, but you can find it in proverbs, Israel's life, okay? So this is, this is what we learned. Did we miss something? What is, where is the, okay, yes. Okay, so let us talk about how it made its way into the canon, how it was accepted into Jew, Jewish, Jewish list of books. Because the canon, the canon is, when we say canon, I just want to refresh your mind, is the official list of writings are judged by a community like Judaism, Judaism community, Roman Catholic community, Protestants, Greek Orthodox, Islam, all these communities all took, I told you before, there are a lot of books that are written. There are a lot of books that are composed. And each community may, had a council and they chose some of them to be the books that speaks, that inspires them. That for them, these are the books, the list of books that they are going to use as inspired by God. The rest, they don't, they don't consider as inspired by God. So, so the Roman Catholic canon, the Roman Catholic Church canon is the list of book we have in the Roman Catholic Bible. The Protestant Bible have a list of books too. The Greek Orthodox Church has a list of books too. That may be more than what the Roman Catholics have. Islam has some parts of those books into the Quran. The Quran has certain parts that share the same stories with the Old Testament, okay? So, so the Judeo-Christian and the Abrahamic religions, they all have what you call canons. So the canon, they are like a list of questions that the book has to answer to make its way into, to be accepted, okay? Or setting boxes, the book has to check setting boxes before it can be accepted. And so that canon, accept the, the Christian canon accepts this book. And why it accepts this book is also something we have to talk about. So this book was officially accepted as inspired book and source of moral teaching. It is used to teach morals, okay, in, in the church. And, and it was officially accepted by the, by Judaism into canon, in the canon, in a Jewish council that was put together in AD ninety. We are in twenty twenty-two. We are talking about ninety. That was way back, in the first century, okay? Way back, ninety AD, that was when this book made its way fully into the Jewish canon. The Christians adopted it later, okay? But the Jewish adopted it into the canon AD nineteen, okay? All right, so, and then the reason why they adopted it is, as we said, it's ancient attribution to Solomon. Because Solomon's name was slapped on it. That one was very, very decisive. It was very decisive why they accepted it, because Solomon's name is on it. And Solomon is one of the greatest kings of Israel, okay? So, and, and, and Solomon had, had, had babies, had black babies too. So it was, it was for everybody, the book was for everybody. Okay, but there are other factors that, that the Song of Songs that made the Song of Songs make its way into the Bible. The first thing is the allegorical allegory. The allegory is something that is this used, a symbol that is used to stand for the real thing that they are talking about. So the symbol of love between God and Israel. So they, human sexual relationship between men or between two humans is taken as the symbol of the love between God and Israel. That's, that's very interesting. And we are going to consider that into details next week. We're going to talk about, about how, how, how the sexual relationship between couples is, or describes, or is a symbol of God's love with Israel. That is a question. And, and I want you to think about that. And when we come next week, I will, I will ask some of you to, to, to say something about it, okay? We will start by saying something about it then, before I do, I do the, the rest of the, of the session. So, so that's one of the things, it's allegorical, it makes, it, it makes a symbol out of, out of the human, their relationship with Israel, God's relationship with Israel, out of their own experience. That's part of it. And then it's tradition of affirming that human love is life and so it is sacred. Every life for them is sacred. So if life is sacred, human love is also, human love is life. And if human love is life, then, then, then it's sacred. And if it's sacred, we have to treat it with respect. There is a reason why this is going on. And the third one is actually the consequence of the, of the second one. The third one is that they actually put it in the Bible so that they can use it to promote a wholesome attitude toward human sexual relationship within married love, okay? This is also going to generate a whole lot of discussion. Does it mean that the other, other, if it's out of marriage, then that is not wholesome? That's something that we have to talk about next week. So, so these are the factors, these are the reasons why this book is in the Bible. And I hope that as you read it, for now, you read it, you already begin to see its meaning, how its meaning, how you can even draw, how you can even use this to pray. That you can read a text here and then think about it and then draw, we can draw wisdom out of it. Wisdom means we really can apply it to our lives, okay? So let us, before, is there any, any questions? So next week, we are going to, I, I will say that you, we can, I wanted us to, to talk about, we'll talk about the first part, chapter one, next week as we discuss this book. But I wanted us to read also the, the last chapter, chapter eight. We read from, so chapter eight, verses five. Chapter eight, verses five to the end. Chapter eight, verse five through verse fourteen, okay? That's the end. Chapter five, eight through fourteen, before we come. So if this is in the back of your mind, if you have read, if you have read the first part, chapter one, if you have not read the first part, please read chapter one first and then read chapter eight, verse five through fourteen. And, and, and come ready with questions or with contributions about this question. How can you compare? Well, what is a comparison? How can you compare human sexual love or human sexual relationship to the relationship between God and Israel? Or if you want to go a little bigger, the relationship between God and human beings, okay? Or the relationship between Christ and the church? Or the relationship between Christ and you? How would you relate the two, human sexual relationship with Christ and you? That your relationship is described in a sexual, human sexual way. So think about that and I, I hope I will get some good answers.